Okay, well, let's see, we could go ahead, let's see, we have five of us now? That's good odd number, that's good, so. Let's call the meeting to order. This is the April fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Meeting of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission and first item of business is approval of the minutes. I have a couple of correct minor tiny, tiny corrections, so. On page seven. The very first sentence. It's not exactly correct, I said, it said Chairman Delwich stated, Chairperson Delwich stated even at four lots. The approximate lot size was around sixteen thousand square feet. And all but sixteen of the forty-two lots in the area were of smaller size. It actually should read that. Only sixteen of the forty-two lots were of smaller size. And I mean, I think that's the way, I know that's what I, what I was conveying. So. Just for the record, it'd probably be good to have it. And then on that same page, in the fourth paragraph. The last sentence. Chairperson Delwich stated he felt it was foolish. For the commission to expect that their decision regarding this development would have future implications. It should say would not have. So those are the two things I noticed. And. And while I was reading the minutes, I also fact checked myself. And it's not something we need to change in the minutes, but I'll just, I just want to state that I. In the last meeting when we were talking about rezoning, I said that. In the past, it always had the major development at the same time of the rezoning, and I was looking back at the one we had a couple of years ago. Where we had a rezoning. And a major development on the same thing, and I thought they were the same item, but actually the rezoning was a different item, so just to. Just wanted to correct myself there. So what we did last month was not. Unusual, it's not always the way we've done it, but it was definitely. Not that unusual, so. With that, with those corrections, would someone like to move to approve the minutes? David?
I move that we approve the minutes. From the. The March meeting as amended by Alan in those two instances.
There a second? Someone want to raise their hand a second?
I can second that.
Okay, that's all in favor of approving the minutes?
I'm sitting out of this one.
Yeah, okay, Tip, are you voting on this?
Well, no, because I left after two hours.
Oh, okay, so we have. The motion passes three zero with two extensions, and it looks like Jean is here now. Just in time. Okay, so we'll move on to the business portion of the meeting and just a quick refresher. How we operate, I'll call an item for consideration and planning staff will describe what the request was, what their analysis is and what their. Recommendations are. Regarding the issue and following that, we allow the applicant to speak. And following the applicant's speaking, we'll open the public hearing to the public for public comment. And. Anyone in the audience to be entitled to express their thoughts on that, deliberate and vote to approve. Deny, possibly postpone if it's appropriate, some occasionally will slightly modify what the original request was and approve something. Related, I mean, you know, some subset of what was requested. And as we go through the process, we're guided by what's in our zoning ordinance, we're not making new laws, we don't legislate, we. Interpret what's in the zoning ordinance and zoning code, and that's how we operate and. Does it, are there, at this point, are there any conflicts or ex parte conversations to disclose? Okay, since there's none, we'll move on to the first items of unfinished business, this is. Major development twenty-one oh one, six El Paso Boulevard, Walter Harder of Six El Paso LLC applicant. And variance twenty-one oh seven, a height variance twenty-six point five feet, where twenty-five feet is required, six El Paso Boulevard, same applicant.
So staff is asking that these items be postponed to the May twelfth meeting, we've been working with. The applicant and we need some additional time actually to complete staff report and. All the review and evaluation, so had agreed that with the applicant that we would take it forward in May.
Okay, so is there a motion to postpone those two items?
I move to approve that we postpone major development plan MJR twenty-one oh one and may also. Postpone the variance at this time, variant twenty-one zero seven until the May twelfth meeting.
Okay, is there a second? We have a second, okay. So any, just if there's no discussion, let's vote, all those in favor? Okay, so that carries now, I noticed in, you know. In our packet, item number six is listed, but in the agenda that was in on the website, it shows that is being withdrawn.
Yes, and if you wanted to go ahead and. You know, discuss that at this point, that that would be fine in case there's anybody in the audience. You're, you do have a memo from Senior Planner Karen Birchfeld about. After a lot of back and forth with the applicant, he did agree that he's not going to have any seating, and so the parking. Demand would be calculated the same as what the building is grandfathered for, it's currently grandfathered for retail. And a convenience type food service is the same parking demand as what he's grandfathered for. So there was no increased demand that needed to be addressed. And so he's withdrawn the request.
Okay, so there's really nothing to. Since the request is drawn, withdrawn?
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Well, okay. I think it'd be safe just to note to the audience, if anybody's here to. Based on the variance twenty-one and oh eight at one twelve Ruxton Avenue, that item is not going to be considered tonight. Since the application was withdrawn. So. I think that would be safe.
Yes.
So moving on. The next item is item four, major conditional use twenty-one oh one, major conditional use permit for food vending. Seven twenty-two and seven twenty-four Manitou Avenue, Brandy and Billy Chisholm applicants.
Miss, I'll just remind you, I have everything pulled up, so if you want me to pull up any floor plans or anything like that, I can, I'm ready to go for you.
Great, thank you, there was a site layout and floor plan that was submitted, I did email that out today, but. At during the, when we get to that point in the staff report or at any point, Christine. If you want to pull that up, I just, since it's not in the packets, I thought it would be helpful if we shared screen with that. So the applicants are proposing approval of an outdoor vending and indoor seating at the addresses as noted. It's in the downtown zoning district. The, there was a food vending. Operation that was approved on the vacant lot at seven twenty-two, seven twenty-two Manitou Avenue in twenty fifteen under CUP fourteen thirteen. The property owner who owns both the vacant lot and the building that's, that's under the current request. He had operated that last vending operation for probably a couple of years, maybe, maybe three, something like that. And then because of some different reasons, didn't operate and ultimately the business license lapsed. Which resulted in the CUP becoming invalid. So currently the improvements installed for that previous operation, the small temporary service building and fencing. Along the sidewalk edge and some other things are still in place for that. The current proposal seeks to reestablish a food service and outdoor seating use on that vacant lot. For Rocky Mountain beignets, the small service building is being updated with a fire suppression hood system. And the applicants plan to install new plannings and generally improve the appearance of the site. In addition to using the vacant lot, the applicants also proposed to use the ground floor of the building, seven twenty-four Manitou Avenue. Which was formerly a retail location that housed Mavi Turkish imports. As the commissary kitchen for the food vending operation and indoor seating for customers. Some accessory retail use may also be incorporated, and you can see the site layout on the. Guess it would be toward the top of the screen is the vacant lot. Showing some, some seats and the small vending eight by fifteen vending unit that's there and then. At the bottom of the screen is the actual floor plan for the inside seating. It shows some retail display and where the commissary kitchen and some, and a raft bathroom is located. The properties lie within the downtown zoning district. Only business conducted within a building is allowed in the downtown zone. Which is why the major conditional use permits required for the food vending and outdoor seating operation. The lot has been previously, previously used for outdoor restaurant seating. Used to be used associated with restaurants at seven eighteen Manitou Avenue. Conditional use permits have also been approved in the past for outdoor food sales and craft and market type vending on that lot. Because this is a hybrid request with an outdoor operation that's also using some indoor space. The accessory use of the indoor space in the adjacent building is being processed as under the same conditional use. A parking variance would potentially have been required to change the existing building to a restaurant use. However, the cooking and service will be from the vacant lot, so that's really the primary part of the operation. And so just the seating as shown. Doesn't really constitute a full-on restaurant use of that indoor space. And so we, we've incorporated everything under this makeup process. The use of the indoor space is grandfathered for retail. And so I talked a little bit more about that later in the staff report. In regard to parking calculations. As I've noted in the staff recommendations. Staff has specified that it, that this, any approval of this request is not grandfather seven twenty-four Manitou Avenue for a restaurant use. Should the operation change in the future? Say. Seven twenty-four wanted to become a standalone restaurant. Then a parking variance or other actions depending on the zoning code provisions at the time will need to be applied. So according to the El Paso County Assessor's records, the existing vacant lot is approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. That would include the creek, so the previous site plan for the use of the property showed the available area is approximately eight hundred square feet. There is a retaining wall along the creek that was removed two to three years ago by the property owner, unfortunately. Reinstalling the, the retaining wall for that creek bank area has not yet been accomplished. So the property owner had a structural engineer who has designed both the new wall system and expected the existing conditions. The engineers recommended a twelve-foot setback distance from the unsupported slope. Which the applicants have indicated they'll comply with in regard to the proposed use of the lot, you can see that. Noted, there's an area of fence with a twelve foot, twelve foot setback that actually increases from. East to west because of the angle of the, the back of the lot there. According to the application, the small building, which is actually eight by fifteen on the property. Will be used to prepare and serve beignets, which are a type of French doughnut and other menu items. The application information states there will be patio seating for twenty customers and that's shown. With some bench seating for people waiting to pick up to-go orders, that's also shown. The site plan that's been provided that you have on the screen does show, doesn't show covered seating. That was previously, previously allowed with some conditions and to ensure compliance with fire code. Staff has included. The same conditions because even though they may not plan to do covered seating at this point, that may be something that they want to. Add later on because we do get those afternoon summer rains that can affect their outdoor seating. And so staff has gone ahead and left that condition in. A fence, as I've mentioned, will need to be placed across the lot at, now originally staff said twelve feet from the top of the slope. The actual recommendation from the engineer is twelve feet from the toe of the slope down at the bottom. And I had explained to the applicant that when we send the code enforcement out, officer out. To verify installation of the fencing and that type of thing, we really need a dimension from top of slope, we don't need. The code enforcement officer trying to figure out what that means, you know, in the creek. And so I have amended. One of the conditions to account for that, and I'll go into that a little bit later when I review the conditions with you. But the, the recommendation is twelve feet from the toe of, of, of slope. Which there is an area of concrete down at the bottom, which is probably why the, the engineer recommended. That area as the, as the starting point for the distance. The building at seven twenty-four Manitou Avenue has a footprint of approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. You also have the floor plan that's been provided showing the layout of seating and, and, and other features of that indoor space. That's also addressed in the staff recommendation. And we note parking is based on square footage, not number of seats, so I was still able to figure. The parking calculations even without verification of seating at the time of writing of the staff report. So there's no change in that. Gravel or stone pathways, bushes along the fence of the sidewalk, potted plants within the site. Are existing or will, or, or proposed and beautify and decorate the property. There's an existing metal fence and double width gate at the opening of the lot across the front of the property. The fencing is installed on landscape, on a landscape timber base. Staff is aware of the security of the area during off hours and understands the building, the building can be closed and locked. It's, it's important that access to the property overall can be controlled when the business is not operating. As that could become an overnight hangout, there have been some instances of that when there's not been a business operating there. And that can be a nuisance for police. And it can be subject to vandalism if the property is not secured, which I'm sure the, the applicants would not, not want to have happen. The property owner was previously advised by the fire department. What acceptable controls for the entrance gate would be. And the applicants will want to work with the fire department again to approve how that gate secured. Because there's also the stairs that are going down from the adjacent building to the east at seven eighteen, seven twenty Manitou Avenue. Those actually access into this lot, I don't believe they come out as far as the applicant's. Site plan is showing, and so for people to have access. They'll either need to be some provisions made where those stairs kind of similar to what's shown on the site plan. Where the access for those are provided directly from the sidewalk or. People will have to be able to get in and, and access those stairs, there's also a fire door that's located. In the vicinity under those, under the landing for those stairs that exits the lower. Level of that adjacent building, and so those, those have to be not only. Accessible for ingress and egress of the building occupants, but also the fire department. The proposed operation will be seven days a week, seven AM to seven PM with variable hours during the summer and winter seasons. More than likely longer hours or at least evening hours in the summer and shorter hours, maybe some days that they don't operate during the winter. As noted, donuts are the primary food item with coffee and other beverages. Weather will impact the operation on some days, both in summer and winter, however, with indoor seating at seven twenty-four Manitou Avenue. This will give them the ability to offer a more year-round operation. The application indicates up to three employees, in addition to the applicants themselves. Customers will have the option of eating indoors or outdoors or taking the food and drink with them. It's going to be very portable so that, you know, I think they'll probably have a, a good percentage of customers that will. Pick it up and, and just take it as they stroll along with them, looking at other shops. The city zoning code requires the major conditional use permits to. Meet the following criteria. With respect to the type of use, so number one is regarding the surrounding neighborhood. And item A is regarding the proposed use furthering the architectural and historical qualities and character. As set forth in the Manitou Springs Design Guidelines. The property is located within the historic district and is a highly visible part of the downtown streetscape. Staff will, actually, I believe I've provided, but if I haven't, a copy of guideline one ten point seven as part of the, well, it, I'm sorry, it didn't get into this report, I, I missed that, I just realized. It applies to site elements and enhancements in the down, of downtown improvements, whether temporary or permanent. So anything that's done should be compatible with the character of the downtown and consistent with the city streetscape improvements. That's what we had done with the last operator. No changes to the existing building are proposed, the property owners previously improved the facade. By restoring the original size and shape of the second floor windows. Which had been infilled with much smaller units and improvements to the storefront windows. Which had previously been altered and they were previously a lot smaller. The owner presented a concept plan to the planning commission for a new building on the vacant lot in twenty seventeen. And obtained historic preservation commission approval for the building at that same, that same year. That effort has not yet moved forward and the HPC approval will require reapplication. And a major development permit application to the. Planning commission. Will also be necessary in order to get the construction fully approved. The owner has indicated he still plans to build on the lot. But it'll be at some point in the future and is not imminent. A bit, and he feels a beneficial use for both the lot and the adjacent building. And their interim is not only desired, but that'll help him reach that goal. Item B is in regarding the proposed use being compatible and function and design with surrounding land uses. The property is surrounded by existing retail and nearby restaurant uses. The existing small building has electrical service and it's provided water and wastewater from seven twenty-four Manitou Avenue. All facilities must be inspected and approved by the El Paso County Health Department. They've done an interim, kind of a preliminary inspection, they'll be doing final inspection and improvements or approvals. For the operation once we get through this part of the process. Let's see, we're. So the property. Has had some use as accessory outdoor seating for restaurants that have operated at seven eighteen Manitou Avenue. That extends back more than thirty years, there was never any seating requirements or parking requirements or any kind of. Formal approval, that just kind of was happening for years. And then when that stopped, then there were, you know, other uses that were approved for the vacant lot. We did look at, and this is what was done at the last time that this food vending was, was. Proposed on this property, we calculated the grandfathered parking demand based on the size of the area. And staff utilized the square footage provided, which was eight hundred square feet. Which is likely generous considering that there's a whole back area that isn't available for use at this point. But using that, because once the slope is fixed. Then they would be able to utilize the, the whole space. The grandfathered outdoor restaurant seating. Parking demand is for off-street parking spaces. So in regard to the proposed food vending. For a bakery or cafe, limited food service is one space per three hundred square feet. So that would be three off-street spaces. So one way or the other, that is a little less than, than what just the restaurant seating previous use would be. Then in regard to the indoor seating. That space is grandfathered for retail parking at about twelve hundred and fifty square feet. The parking demand for retail is three hundred square feet. Per parking space, basically, that would be four parking spaces. And then the use for the bakery or limited food service. Is for parking spaces, so that's, that's a wash as far as the grandfather parking. So staff found that it didn't, this does not require a parking variance, the way that it's being used. As I mentioned previously, if, if the proposal should change at any point in the future. And the indoor space, say, becomes a fully operating restaurant. Then we would need to look at. Parking demand and calculate it a little differently, it's much higher. Demand calculation and. So depending on what the requirements are in place in the zoning code at that point, then we would have to see how that, how to handle that. But under this proposal, the way that they're proposing to use these spaces. It would be consistent with the grandfathered uses of those spaces as far as the, the parking demand. Staff just wanted to note also, in addition to. Kind of the long-term restaurant seating that had occurred before some of these approved conditional use permits for this, for the lot. There were a number of instances in the past where unlicensed users on the property were kind of having to be run off pretty frequently. And code enforcement had to address those during the summers, so staff feels pretty strongly that allowing usage of the property. Would define the activities allowed and result in the operator exercising control. Over the use of the lot and cutting down on the city having to monitor and. Interact with unpermitted users. So staff supports the applicant's proposal to improve the appearance of seven twenty-two Manitou Avenue. In particular, the property owner's efforts to improve the property had good results. And laid groundwork for these applicants to improve and beautify the property even more. Staff believes the proposal, as explained in the application, will be a beneficial. Staff believes the proposal, as explained in the application, will be a beneficial upgrade uh to the area. And staff provides the proposal is compatible with the function and design of surrounding land uses. Item number two, criteria number two, is regarding the intent of the zoning code and the use being consistent. With the intent of the code to promote public self tape, health, safety and general welfare. So no off-street parking has been provided for previous restaurant usage of the property and no parking is proposed. The application states parking permits will be obtained for the applicants and any employees. The proposed use will not be at a destination, uh or it's not a destination for customers. But will appeal to and draw from uh the many visitors to the downtown area. Unloading of food supplies may be accomplished from the center lane of Manitou Avenue with the proper permits. And should be avoided during times of heavy congestion in the area, which I'm sure the operators uh. Would themselves not want to be loading and unloading food supplies uh when they're trying to deal with their highest customer demand. Uh, staff notes the application doesn't in indicate indicate the inclusion of trash receptacle receptacles. Traffic generated from this type of use can be substantial. Uh, there should be a minimum of two trash receptacles on site. That's what was required uh for the previous use. Uh, one at the dining tents or or in the dining uh near the dining seating. Um. And one near the food service area. Uh, at least one receptacle should be placed inside the indoor seating area. The applicants are encouraged to implement recycling on the property. Um, and experience tells us there will be additional usage of city-maintained trash containers nearest to the property. So the applicant may need to install a receptacle outside. Of the lot on the public property and be responsible for collection of its contents. Uh, staff recommends all trash receptacles. Uh, outdoor trash receptacles match those used by the city in the downtown. Um, and that is also uh consistent with the requirements of the previous uh uh food vending proposal. So staff finds the proposal is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning code and staff has provided. Uh, that purpose uh information from the code for the commission uh and the general intent. Uh, statement from the zoning code for your reference uh as well. Item three, that the conditional use is consistent with the master plan man Plan Manitou. So Plan Manitou encourages uses that are compatible with their surroundings. And the community overall and which contribute to Manitou Springs economic vitality. The city frequently receives. Inquiries from individuals wanting to operate food or other vending carts in the downtown. Um. Vending is not allowed on public property. And the subject property, this property, uh the the vacant lot is one of the few locations in this zone which can accommodate. Uh, this sort of business. So staff finds there is a demand for vending operations. And additional commercial activity in a limited, organized and upgraded manner can be compatible with the downtown. Uh, and staffs uh listed some Plan Manitou goals and poss- policies that we feel. Uh, support the request for the board's refer, the conditions reference as well. Item four, conditional uses shall not be allowed where such would create a nuisance, traffic congestion congestion. Threat to the public health, safety or welfare or violation of any guidelines of the city code, state law, rule or regulation. Staff does not believe the proposed use, if operated and maintained as any responsible business should. Create a nuisance or traffic congestion. Uh, as I had mentioned previously, this isn't a destination business. And will rely on visitors to the downtown that are already present. Uh, during processing of the request, staff did become aware that the sewer serving seven twenty four Manitou Avenue was connected. To the sewer line under seven twenty six Manitou Avenue and there had been issues with the wastewater capacity of that joined line. When the line overflowed, which it had done, uh it would do so in the basement of seven twenty six Manitou Avenue. Which was a concern for the owners of that property and the business operation, which also kept most of its inventory in the basement. Because this proposal uses the retail space at seven twenty four Manitou Avenue. For both customer seating and as the commissary for the food vending operation. The city is requiring the subject property to separate from the sewer service next door and provide a new sewer line. To this building. In addition, the installation of a grease trap on that sewer line is also required. These are upgrades that will benefit this property and proposal and will resolve potential health and safety issues for the adjacent property owners. This also brings seven twenty four Manitou Avenue into compliance with the city's code requirements for wastewater service. So the property owner is aware of this. He's been part of these discussions. He's expressed his agreement that he is going to uh replace that, yeah, provide his own sewer line. Uh, and uh get off of that shared line and we have not yet uh permitted that, but it has, we have heard from. Uh, at least one uh sewer contractor uh who was putting together his proposal. So. I know that they are working on that. Uh, the food operation uh will be inspected and require issuance of a license by El Paso County Health Department. There was discussion about customers being directed to the Wichita parking lots, public restrooms. That was approved under the previous uh vending operation um. Uh, because there really was no real connection between the vacant lot and. Um, the seven, the the building that there is now as being proposed. Um, and so. Uh, that was necessary and given the shared sewer condition, it probably made a lot of sense, even though we weren't aware of that at the at that time. Uh, however, with improvement of the sewer service, staff encourages allowing customer use of the restrooms. Whenever the indoor seating at seven twenty four Manitou Avenue is in in use uh as indicated in the application. Uh, I think that uh not only is better, but uh, you know. Doesn't uh completely rely on restrooms at, you know, on another property that frankly, the applicants don't control. Uh, the proposed operation, if approved by the city council, will be issued a Manitou Springs business license. And be required to collect and remit sales taxes to the city, county and state of Colorado. So staff finds the proposal does comply with criterion number four. Number five, conditional uses shall not be allowed on properties subject to natural hazards unless adequate mitigation is provided. So Fountain Creek does run along the back uh of both the vacant lot and the building. Um, and is subject to floodplain restrictions. Staff is concerned or stuff was concerned with the stability of the creek bank. Um, and since it's not currently supported, although it was questionable how much support the previous. Uh, wall had provided, given the condition it was in, just to be fair. Um, at staff's request, the property owner uh provided a letter from the engineer responsible. For the new retaining wall drawings advising about the condition of the creek bank and the distance people should remain. From the top of the bank and actually it's the toe of the bank in case of instability. Staff is recommending, as long as it takes for the property owner to put a new wall in place. That the engineer be contracted to perform inspections every eight weeks. That's every two months. Or sooner after significant rainfall events. Um, you know, we just want to make sure that there's no signs of failure that could make him. Uh, the engineer want to push the the public use, the the customer use. Uh, farther uh toward the street. Um, and just keep an eye on it in case the property owner might need to accelerate his uh plans. Which I believe are to install the retaining wall this fall. Again, having some use of the property and frankly, uh I think probably some income. Uh, from the property helps him to achieve uh achieve that goal as well. Um, under those provisions, staff finds the proposal provides adequate mitigation for natural hazards. Uh, associated with the Fountain Creek Bank. In addition to addressing uh those criteria, one through five. The major contri- conditional use permit application needs to provide the following items. So a site map uh that is provided in the applicant's PowerPoint presentation. A written statement of intent, uh information uh on the applicant's intent and objection objectives. For Rocky Mountain Beignets is provided in the PowerPoint presentation that follows the staff report. A citizen participation plan and report. Uh, so the applicants weren't required to host a neighborhood meeting. The mailed notification. To all property owners within two hundred feet as required by the zoning code was accomplished. Uh, staff was contacted by David and Julie Pastor who owned the property and business at seven twenty six Manitou. I've uh attached the email from the pastors following the report. They. Expressed concern about the situation with the sewer, which is how we became aware of this this connected sewer situation. But they also indicated their support and have uh indicated that a number of times as we've talked on the phone and in different. Instances, um, their support for the proposed business. Not, uh, they weren't concerned about that. They certainly weren't trying to stop that. They were just concerned about. Uh, the sewer uh situation which uh is being resolved. So there haven't been any other comments or questions. Uh, received from the public in response to either mailed notice or the posting on the property or the. Publication in the newspaper that have all been done. Uh, traffic analysis, uh the applicants were not required to provide a traffic analysis. Due to, due to the nature and location of the request, uh it's going to rely on existing visitor traffic. And so as uh we have consistently done, we have not required for this level of of um. Property usage and existing uh property usage, uh we've not required uh traffic analysis. The uh building floor plan uh house has now been provided. Um. Staff notes there are the improvements like the tables and chairs and that type of thing are shown on the vacant lot. The amount of outdoor seating and indoor seating is proposed. Uh, that's also noted that the twenty seats is noted in the uh. Uh, in the PowerPoint presentation as well. And then item six is regarding uh additional detailed technical studies. Uh, other than information requested from the engineer in relation to the creek creek bank. Uh, no other studies or reports were required at this point. Um, and then item seven is the public facility and services impact report. Um. So staff notes as ha- as has been discussed in previous applications. Some items in this uh public facilities and services impact report code section. Are more readily applied to new development or proposals with larger impacts. The applicant's PowerPoint presentation lists information applicable uh to this proposal. But doesn't appear to directly relate to the specific items that staff has noted below. Staff has inserted. Uh, some responses in bold uh in relation to those items. So in regarding to water supply, uh no impacts to the water system capacity or or anticipated. Similar food service use uh operated at this location and there were no water capacity issues. Manitou Springs Public Works has not noted any concerns regarding the proposal in regard to capacity. Likewise, with sewage capacity, as noted, the property is currently on a shared sewer. And the adjacent with uh the adjacent building at seven twenty six because of the use of the subject property uh for food service. And the building at seven twenty four is part of this request and and part of the operation. Uh, especially uh being used for food preparation commissary. Uh, separation of the sewer line uh from the adjacent property has been required. Also required is installation of a grease trap onto the new sewer line. Uh, that in those improvements greatly benefit both this proposal uh and seven twenty four and seven twenty six. Manitou avenues as well. So those are are great upgrades and I I. The public service department app supports those uh and had recommended those. Uh, three demonstration provision for services meet the needs of the proposed development. Um, any significant impacts on other city facilities and services aren't anticipated. The proposed business. Is in an area of intense business pedestrian and vehicular activity and will operate. Similarly to other downtown businesses. So no issues or adverse comments have been received. From outside agencies or other city departments. Staff believes the existing streets and other facilities and services are adequate for operation of the food vending operation. At seven twenty two Manitou Avenue and associated indoor seating and commissary. And retail sales at seven twenty four Manitou Avenue. The uh addition of this activity. On these properties is consistent in scope and compatible with the downtown and other uh surrounding business operations. Number four, that the land is suitable. Uh, this really isn't. Applicable, the the building at seven twenty four is already developed and the lot at seven twenty two Manitou Avenue. Has been used similarly previously. When that property is proposed for development, then it will need to provide a full report uh for each of the items. Listed in the public facilities and services impact report. Um, but at this point, uh it appears that there aren't issues with suitability. Uh, five demonstration that development protects the natural resources of the land. Again, that's not really applicable. It's in a heavily uh developed part of town um and uh. There aren't really any natural resources on the lot to protect, so to speak. Uh, six demonstration that the development layout provides protection from wind, noise, traffic, etc. Uh, again, that's not really applicable. Uh. As noted, staff recommends all improvements and materials be provided to the city for review and conformance. With the historic district design guidelines and the standards set by the downtown streetscape improvements. Uh, those are really the important elements uh in regard to uh what goes on in this property as far as. Uh, how it's laid out and and that type of thing. Um. Item seven is demonstration by provision by provision of a traffic study. Uh, staff didn't require a traffic study due to the magnitude of the proposal. As noted, when the vacant lot goes through development approval, information on traffic and parking. Needs will uh need to be provided and um this item addressed in through that uh project. Uh, but at this point, for this type of of use, um there aren't any permanent improvements proposed, so. Uh. No traffic study required. Uh, eight demonstration that physical and visual barriers are minimized. No changes to existing uh pedestrian and vehicular circulation is proposed or anticipated. The property does not feature significant views and does not block or impede views from adjacent property. It's part of the Manitou Avenue downtown streetscape and as such is part of the view of downtown itself. Item nine is identification of long-term effects of the development. Um, the alternative to the proposed development is to rent the ground floor of the building to another retail tenant. And either establish a different food vending or another type of business use. On the vacant lot until such time as that property develops. Alternative, a- alternatively, vacant lot could be kept vacant and unused until development. Staff feels adding this activity to these properties is beneficial both to the applicant and to the downtown area. And may result in the property owner being able to move forward with the improvements he would like to make in the future. Um, so by their very nature, these really aren't intended to be permanent. You know, long term, certainly they can always turn into longer term. But ultimately, there will be a building built on this site, I'm sure. Um, and uh, you know, then this use will either be indoors uh or it'll have a a different kind of business. Uh, between these two uh, these two properties. And I, item ten is regarding protecting cultural resources. Uh, that's really not applicable. The site's been. Heavily excavated in the past, uh used to have a building on it. And I doubt that there are any significant cultural resources uh on the property. And item eleven is demonstration that the development provides protection from wildfire. So. Uh, the building i- is site is close to a hundred percent impervious. And there's no significant vegetation on this vacant lot that could be mitigated to reduce wildfire hazards. So. Uh, that's really not applicable. So under staff recommendation, staff would like to see a permanent building on the vacant portion of of this ownership and hopes continuing. To allow some beneficial use of the. Of of this ownership and hopes continuing to allow some beneficial use of the property. Will allow this to move forward at some point. However, that type of improvement's not yet been provided or not yet proved to be feasible and some. Regulated use of the vacant property with appropriate up- upgrades would be beneficial to both it and the surrounding area. Associating the use of the building with the vacant lot. Doesn't harm either property and recognizes something that would likely happen anyway. And allow the proposed food operation to become more feasible as a year-round operation. Staff also um is not a proponent of vendors and food carts roaming throughout the downtown on public property. However, there's interest in this type of business operation. And this is one of the few private locations in the downtown that can accommodate vending. Potential parking impacts are limited to employees as patron usage will be passed by. And not exceed the calculated grandfathered parking associated with past restaurant seating. That occurred in the vacant lot for many years or the retail uh grandfathered for the the building. Uh, that that is currently uh recognized. The applicants have provided detailed floor plans and a site layout for both the inside and outside spaces. Showing the pedestrian setback required by the engineer uh from the creek and other proposed improvements. If the commission is comfortable with staff reviewing and approving the specific materials proposed. For for improvements after um uh after the major conditional use approval. Uh, staff has offered that as a condition of approval that is consistent with how we handled. Uh, the previous uh food vending operation staff. Uh, provided uh approval for the improvements that went in place. Uh, and then actually, once those were in place, uh. That operation operated for a year and then came back uh for uh. Kind of confirmation that it it was gonna work a- and it did, it was fine, um, and I think this one will as well. Based on the criteria and evaluation required to approve a conditional use, staff proposes. The planning commission forward a recommendation to the city council for approval of the request to allow outdoor food vending. From the eight foot by fifteen foot temporary structure in place with associated outdoor seating. At seven twenty two Manitou Avenue and the use of seven twenty four Manitou Avenue. For indoor seating and as a commissary for the food service operation within the downtown zone district. And under the following conditions, one and staff has has um. Uh amended this uh from what is in the report. So item one, uh, I'm proposing read, the planning staff shall review and approve improvements. Shown on the detailed site layout for the vending and outdoor seating at seven twenty two Manitou Avenue. Any improvements requiring a Manitou Springs property improvement permit. Or a Pike's Peak Regional Building Permit are required to be obtained, uh. Are required to be obtained. Uh, two prior doitions of a business license to allow operations to begin, the property owner shall apply. For and obtain a tap and permits for installation of a new sewer service line. And grease trap at seven twenty four Manitou Avenue and such installations shall pass inspection by the Manitou Springs Water and Sewer Division. Three, the applicants must obtain and maintain all health department inspections and licensing. For both properties and a valid Manitou Springs business license with collection and remittance of sales taxes. Four, an annual parking permit for one of the public parking lots operated by the city of Manitou Springs as available. For each employee shall be required as a condition of business license approval. And documentation of this shall be provided with each renewal application. Should the city change the parking regulations, implement a resident or employee parking program? Or establish a fee and loop parking program, the operator of the business shall participate. Rather than purchase annual parking passes. I believe the parking department is working on some of that. Five, customer parking associated with food operation and seating is waived. The proposed indoor seating at seven twenty four, that's a correction. Manitou Avenue does not constitute a restaurant operation. And that at that location and therefore approval of the major conditional use permit incorporating seven twenty four Manitou Avenue. Will not result in that property being grandfathered for restaurant use. Any change to the use of the two properties under this proposal will require compliance with the zoning code provisions. In place at that time or will trigger land use review. Six, the applicants may use a sun shade or a canopy on the property. Which does not, which does not have side panels to impede access or visibility into the canopy. To provide covered outdoor customer seating. No canopy or improvement of any type may impede ingress and egress to the fire door. And entrance slash exit for seven eighteen, seven twenty Manitou Avenue. The final configuration, location and provision of any heat for a canopy is subject to the review and approval of the fire department. The applicant shall consult with and adhere to any requirements of the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. In regard to the long-term installation of a canopy and anchoring and uh and anchoring for wind loads. Seven, a minimum of two trash receptacles shall be provided with on the subject lot adjacent to the vending. Uh, uh, building and the outdoor seating. Uh, appropriate trash receptacle shall be provided for the indoor seating area as well. In a, an additional receptacle may be required in front of the lot in the city's amenity zone next to the sidewalk. At the discretion and the request of the public services department. All outdoor receptacles shall coordinate with those used by the city in the downtown. Trash removal. That's adequate in frequency and capacity, including for any receptacle on public property. That's required by the public works department shall be the responsibility of the applicants. Eight, a fence shall be installed a minimum of twelve feet south of the toe. Of the currently unsupported bank, that's a change. Of Fountain Creek that runs along the northern side of seven twenty two Manitou Avenue. In order to provide the pedestrian setback recommended by INTECH Engineering. The site plan shall be updated to show the use. I'm sorry, to show the measurement from the top of slope to the fence at the northwest property corner. This is something that I discussed with the applicants. Realizing that there is a difference between the toe of the slope and the top of the slope. In some areas, it's as much as four feet. So we agreed that if they would measure at that uh northeastern corner. Where they currently show that twelve-foot measurement that. I don't want the code enforcement officer to have to go down in the creek to try to measure from the toe of the slope. And so uh it may be eight feet from the top of the slope. Uh, or six feet or or whatever it is, uh, you know, on the on the top so that it's it's a point that. That the code officer can use, not having to go down to the toe of the slope. Uh, so they're gonna add that to that northeast corner. Uh, and then they're just running the fence straight across instead of angling it. So that'll be easy enough for code enforcement to verify, so that's that's why I've asked that the site plan be. Um, amended. Uh, nu- number nine, the property owner shall contract with INTECH Engineering. To perform visual inspection of the unsupported creek bank. And the area of pedestrian setback at seven twenty two Manitou Avenue. Every eight weeks to conform their confirm, there are no areas of failure or stress developing. That would require additional setback distance for people utilizing the property. More frequent inspections shall be performed following any significant storm event. As determined prudent by the engineer. Frankly, I figured the engineer was better at determining. What amount of rainfall, uh, he really needed to go out and look at the property after. Then then staff, so I've left that up to the engineer to determine. When those additional inspections would be prudent. Uh, number ten, the applicants are encouraged to utilize recyclable service ware. And provide onsite recycling facilities for their use and the use of customers. Number eleven. The property owner shall have one year from the date of major conditional use approval to install. An engineered retaining wall along Fountain Creek at seven twenty two Manitou Avenue. Such wall shall be permitted and adhere to the Manitou Springs Historic Design Guidelines in regard to appearance. Number twelve, outdoor tables and seating shall be compatible in appearance with the city's street scape furnishings. And approved by the planning department prior to installation. And number thirteen, prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The applicant shall install plantings at or near the edge of the public sidewalk, not on the sidewalk. On either side of the access opening in the fencing. The intention is to provide a significant plant border and screen across the front of the property. Plants which tend to have a more vertical growth pattern should be utilized to avoid growing over the public sidewalk. Other plantings on onsite shall be allowed within pots. All plantings shall be maintained to ensure they thrive. A neighborhood services offer officer, which is actually now what the code enforcement uh. Officer is called, shall initially inspect plant installations to ensure they're approved by the. They're as approved by the planning department. Inspections will be performed at business license renewal to confirm plant maintenance. And then item fourteen, the method for securing the access gate to the vacant lot during times of non-operation. Shall require approval by the fire department. Uh, and then staff lists the findings uh one through five as noted. Staff notes that the most, I think there's maybe two or three. Conditions that were not part of the previous approval. Uh, most of these fourteen conditions came out of the previous food vending approval. A number of them were placed in addition to ones that planning commission had recommended. A number of them were um placed uh on the approval, the previous approval by city council and so staff. Basically kept those and just added a couple uh that are in regard specifically to the situation currently on the property like. Installation of the retaining wall and that type of thing. So uh, that is staff's recommendation and I am happy to try to answer questions. You're muted, Alan.
One, there, are there any questions for the applicant, uh, Tip?
Oh, I I had a question from Michelle first before.
I'm sorry for the staff.
Thank you for such a thorough report. This is just a very short, small question. Was there any discussion about um? Allowing dogs on leashes though outside patio the patio area. Uh, the way that is allowed in a number of businesses, I just wondered if that was discussed.
I had not discussed that. I think that's a good question. I think it would be great if if they would allow that, but uh, it's not something we've discussed.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, David.
Uh, this is a question for uh Michelle and Christine. Uh, I'm still relatively new at this, uh, but I've become increasingly concerned. By what it seems to me, uh, the city getting involved in design questions and. Uh, we state very clearly, um, I'll never forget the meeting where Julie Wolf had to restate. Our purpose is to interpret the ordinances and make sure that they're complied with. Um, about five times for that, um. Uh, I think it was at Airbnb in Crystal Hills, but. So for example, I I. Maybe there's a minor saying, but I don't see how twelve, the conditions twelve and thirteen relate to interpretation. Uh, or verification of compliance with the ordinances. And this is a, this is a general question which has nagged at me for some time now.
So specifically in regard to this proposal. Part of the major conditional use talks about. Being compatible compatible with and meeting, in fact, the historic district design guidelines, which are basically all about design. Um, and so I think that you have leeway. Uh, especially under a major conditional use like this where it specifically talks about. Design guidelines compatibility with the area and that type of thing that if there are. Um, items such as street furniture that we have um established a standard for you. I I think the city has has the right to um. To require uh some consistency with with outdoor improvements. I I would never want to. Place requirements on like indoor seating or trash receptacles, that type of thing. It's the outdoor ones. Um, that really, I think. Are part of the reasoning for allowing. A a food vending operation is to get those. Uh, those upgrade and those improvements, um, so that it looks as nice as it can, you know, against the. Rest of the street scape.
Well, speaking as a designer, uh, that kind of thing compatibility uh and quality of design. Um, is is very much in the eye of the beholder and it doesn't seem to me, it doesn't make sense to me that Manitou is in the in that business. As for plantings, I don't. Well, I know, I guess there's a tree or two in front of uh. One business on um Ruxton and uh in front of Good Karma, but. Certainly not in this section of the street scape. Well, maybe this is not the place to discuss it, but I am concerned by this.
Okay, uh, Mike. Oh, yes, Christine.
Sure, I think this is a a excellent topic for discussion, um, and that we can. Incorporate into our forward movement on the code update project. Um, you know, I think this is a philosophically a great discussion to have and um bring in. Folks who have our stakeholders in different districts. Um, in Manitou Springs who feel like they are stakeholders and want to have this, that that we should have this kind of input. Of course, to your point, um, David, there is, there is some. There, there's some question, how far can we go with that? But um, so I think for tonight's purposes, we could. Um, you know, consider that and see what the temperature is of this group, but I think that I agree with you. This is a great topic for discussion. In in regards to the bigger picture.
Well, and let me say once again, I'm I'm amazed as usual. And gratified to see the thoroughness with which the planning department goes through this and. Uh, the amount of effort you extend in helping people applicants realize their projects, so.
Okay, uh, Mike, you had a question?
I had um a couple of comments versus questions, I guess. That the fence is a great idea for more than one reason because um. That area gets really windy and it's got a long history of canopies being blown over. So I don't, I don't really wanna put more restrictions on the applicant, but it's a just a a suggestion for improvement to make sure those canopies are. Are really tied down. Um, I mean, it just, it gets really, really windy and it and it just comes a lot of times without warning and and there's a panic and everything flies and. That that fence will keep the stuff out of the creek. Um, and then Michelle, you mentioned about the the staircase to the east. Um, that that the drawing is actually correct. It goes right down to the street and the the fence. The fence does not block that staircase and and actually that staircase is is a recorded easement. So they couldn't, they couldn't block that legally if they wanted to. And then finally, um, you know, I basically live across the street and I have seen bears. In in the wee hours of the morning on that lot, so and that little fence isn't gonna stop them. So just again, a word to the applicant, if they could kind of keep that clean, because in the fall, they'll have visitors.
Yeah, that's true.
Any other questions for the applicant? I mean, for the staff? Okay, with that, uh, let's uh bring the applicant over and let them speak. Okay, now you're welcome to turn on your video since you're over on the panel now and. Could you start by stating your name and address for the record?
All right, my name is Brandy Chisholm and I live at one two eight U Trail in Weldon Park.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the floor is yours. Uh, your thoughts on the staff report and recommendations?
All right, um, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Michelle and Dylan and Christine. For helping us get through all this, lots of emails and um phone calls, um. The report was very thorough, um. And we are looking forward to opening our business in Manitou.
Now you're comfortable with the staff report?
We are comfortable with the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions for the applicant? Tip?
I was just wondering if you were thinking about allowing dogs on leashes in the outdoor area?
Oh, absolutely. If you ever come by when we're working on it, I always have my Cavalier King Charles out on the patio with me. He's not allowed inside, but he's always outside playing.
Okay, great.
That would be wonderful for me.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Since we have no other questions, if you're free to go now, if, I mean, we don't need anything more from you at this point. If we have more questions, well, we'll bring you back. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing to the public and if anybody in the audience would like to speak, now would be the time to raise your hand and we'll bring you over. And I don't see any hands raised, so with that, I'll close the public comment part of the public hearing and we're ready to deliberate and. Tip?
I think this is an excellent proposal and I think it's going to be a boon for Manitou. And I hope, I've said this the last time this came before, it's in the earlier incarnation. I hope that I, as I know, we all do that there will, there will be a building, permanent building put in that location at some point. But given that we're not in that situation right now, I think this is something that's going to benefit the whole community. And I would like to support them and wish them all success. So anytime you guys are ready, I would be happy to make a motion.
We're ready.
So I move that we approve major cup two one zero one with all staff's recommendations and findings.
Okay, is there a second? It looks like Jean seconded that.
I second that. Sorry, I couldn't unmute.
Okay, great. Now is there any more discussion? Mike?
Before we wrap this up, when will this go to city council? You're muted, Michelle.
May, sorry about that. May fourth is the scheduled date.
May, is there a meeting before then?
Um, no, no.
All right.
Not for business. There are a couple of work sessions, but we don't have a regular session.
Okay.
Any more questions? Comments, discussion? Okay, then if we're through discussing, let's, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, and that's unanimous. This will be coming next on May fourth at city council.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's good. Okay, so moving right along, the next item is new business rezon twenty one oh two rezon commercial to general residential preliminary hearing, sixteen Mayfair Avenue, affinity consulting group applicant on behalf of Virginia Star Morgan Trust owner.
So as it states on the agenda, this is an initial meeting to rezone this property from the commercial zone designation to general residential. The zoning ordinance is, has the specific process for rezoning, which includes this initial meeting and then the public hearing would be scheduled at a subsequent planning commission meeting and then ultimately would go to city council for final approval and passage of a rezoning ordinance. No action is required at this meeting other than setting the public hearing, which is usually done at the commission's next regular meeting. So that would be the commission's meeting in May. The subject property is comprised of a number of formerly platted lots, a meets and bound parcel and an area of vacated right of way. It's approximately forty six thousand six hundred square feet in size and currently contains one single family home that was built in nineteen twenty nine. That home has three bedrooms and two bathrooms in approximately fourteen hundred square feet. It's just outside of the local historic preservation district. So that's not something that the applicant will need to comply with. Staff isn't aware when the current zoning designation, it's not clear when the current zoning designation was put into place. But the property has been in the commercial zone for more than thirty five years since I've been with the city. It's not been something that the city did a rezoning on even when I started to work. It was already commercial and I think it potentially could have been done as long ago as nineteen seventy five when some of the major zone categories were created and implemented in town. The rezoning is requested to facilitate renovation of an addition to the existing house since it is a standalone, single family home. Improvement or expansion of that would not be allowed under the commercial zone unless it was either provided, that went through the process for a conditional use permit or went through this rezoning process, which is what staff recommended. It's more beneficial both for the city to have its own a suitable category for what the intended and long-term use has been. And also for the applicant, this is family property. If they ever do decide to sell the property, though, it is much easier to get a mortgage on a property that's zoned appropriately for the for the use. So that can sometimes be, I sometimes get phone calls from appraisers and from banks wondering what some of these properties that are residential but have had commercial on them. You know, what the, what the reason is. This is one of a property, a number of properties right in this area that staff did a study on a few years ago and noted that the zoning really should be changed and updated. Unfortunately, planning directors started changing over and we never got that project on our work program and weren't able to pursue it. So there have been two other properties in this immediate area in the very same situation where it was long, longstanding single family residential and they wanted to improve the property and we ended up having them rezone. And so this is the third in that, in that immediate area that has requested the same application. The applicant has also submitted an administrative minor subdivision application that staff will be processing. They do plan to create two more lots on the property, so a total of three under the, the size of the property, as many as ten residential units or ten lots actually could be created. But the applicant's only proposing three, three lots for potentially two more dwelling units at some time in the future. That's not something that they have an immediate plan for. And that should be within the, the size and, and scope and inconsistent with the lot pattering in that, in that little enclave. Actually, the property across the street at seventeen Mayfair did that after they rezoned, they replatted so that they could build their carriage house addition and went ahead and plotted off a second lot that you can actually see in the zoning ordinance that's up on the screen that shows that gold property directly across from sixteen Mayfair. So that's consistent with what's gone on previously. So the planning regulations indicate public safety necessity, general welfare and good zoning practice are justifications for their zoning of a property. And so as, as staffs already noted, previous staff study of this area supported good zoning practice, changing the zone for a number of these properties that are now coming in individually. So the criteria for the, for a zoning change is per section eighteen oh five oh eight oh. It's listed in the staff report, items A through G. An additional criterion that's not listed but included in the rezoning regulations is that the proposed area must abut on all or part of at least one side and existing district of the same general classification. So it doesn't have to be a general residential to general residential. It has to be, you know, a residential zone of some type to a residential zone of some type. With the rezoning of the property across the street on Mayfair, this application meets that criteria for proximity. As part of the complete application, the applicant has provided the names and addresses of owners. Staff wants to correct that. It's not ten family members. It's actually six family members and their trusts. It was a little hard to ferret out exactly what was a trust and what was a family member in the listing on the assessors website, but it's actually six family members. That's how it's been handed down and each of those family members, I believe, owns it in their own trust. The surveyor has provided the two sections of the legal description of the property. As you could see, it's quite long and includes meets meets and bounds in addition to some lots. And a portion of Almaly Road, which was previously vacated. That will be significantly simplified when, after we go through the replating process that isn't under review tonight. A detailed explanation of the request for the rezoning, including the reasons. So the applicant has provided a letter which is attached after the staff report that provides a deep detail explanation that addresses the rezoning requirements A through F that are listed at the top of page two of the report. The commission should review that information and determine if the criteria has been sufficiently addressed or if there's further statements or information that you feel is necessary. Staff will also address that criteria specifically in the staff report for the public hearing. Item four is supporting documents. Staff didn't require additional supporting documents or maps for this application. It's a fairly simple request, actually. The number five of public facilities and services impact report. The applicant did submit a separate public facilities and services impact report addressing all of the criteria in that. The report states items six through twelve aren't applicable to the rezoning and the proposed addition subsequently to the house. Staffs provided that section in the subdivision code in this report following the staff report. So commissioners can satisfy themselves that what's provided is sufficient and you agree with the applicant's contention regarding the non-applicable items. Staff did determine that items eleven and twelve can apply to this, to this request. The applicants obtained a wildfire evaluation from the fire department. And so that's already provided and that was done actually for in anticipation of the building permit for the addition to the existing house. But since we had it, I thought it would be a good idea just to go ahead and make it given as part of this, a part of this application. Also, the proposed addition to the home will require submittal of a tier one geo hazards report, which will address item twelve. I know that the applicant is concerned about maybe the cost of accelerating that report. She was doing this in steps, rezoning is the first one. Certainly that tier one report, we're going to get that. We're going to get it. I think actually I have to go back and review, but I think it's going to be required for the, for the minor subdivision as well as the new construction. And I don't really, I don't anticipate there being issues, but if there should be something that's found, it'll get addressed through that either under the minor subdivision or the construction. So if the, you know, unless the commission, if you don't feel that you really need to include the tier one report, you certainly don't have to. You can just find that it, it will be covered. But I wanted to give you the option to go ahead and accelerate that and include it before the rezoning goes to city council, since it's going to be something we're going to get anyway. But I certainly understand the applicant's hesitancy to step into requirements and, and, you know, money that she wasn't anticipating until she got to those future steps. So anyway, I'm sure she may want to talk some more about that. So that's, that's part of, that discussion is, is still up for, for in regard to staff's recommendation. Item six, the citizen participation plan, we didn't require a separate neighborhood meeting for this, this proposal in, due to the scope and, and the surrounding area. The proposed use and the longstanding use meets the, the code requirement for general residential. And it's a, it's a permitted use in the zone, so we didn't feel that it was necessary to do a neighborhood meeting. Given the location off Manitou Avenue on this fairly narrow curving street in an area where other residential properties are immediately adjacent and the longstanding use of the property is consistent with the proposed zone, staff has determined the general residential zone district is appropriate for the property. The applicant, the, the application was published and posted by the planning department and mailed notification was sent by the applicant per the requirements. We do have, we did get an email from a neighbor to the southeast in the, I think it's in the Fountain Creek Villas condominiums or townhomes. And that was included with the report and then we subsequently received a letter from the owner of Blue Skies Inn, which is to the west across Mayfair from, from this property and that has been sent out by email today. So if anybody needs that reviewed, I'm glad to do that. Those are the only public input that we've gotten. At this time, planning commission should hear any public comments and ask for additional information from either planning staff. It may want provided for the public hearing or from the applicant. At the conclusion of discussion, staff recommends the planning commission set the rezoning request for a public hearing at its May twelfth, twenty twenty one regular meeting, at which time the commission will consider a formal recommendation to the city council. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you have at this time.
Questions for staff? I have, I'm curious, like the geological hazards plan and report, you know, I, I can understand that, like, like the situation we had last month with the an area that had never been built. But since there is existing, is existing dwelling unit and this is almost like a housekeeping thing to to apply the right zone to the property. What is the reasoning for, I mean, I, I can see when they go to their minor subdivision possibly or their new building requiring that, but per se for the the rezoning, I'm not quite sure of a good argument for compelling that.
You know, from a staff standpoint, since I knew that it was going to be triggered by future requests. Since in the public facilities and services report, it talks about mitigation of any natural hazards. I wanted to just go ahead and offer that as a potential if, if the commission felt like it was an important part of this, but, but I don't disagree that this isn't raw land. It's, it's going to be, you know, we're going to get the information and we're going to make sure that you know, that tier one report is done for either the construction, you know, and the replating so that things are suitable. But it was really more of covering bases for the applicant in case anybody questioned. But it was really more of covering bases for the applicant in case anybody questioned. Uh, question that, so if it's not something where. Uh, members of the commission feel it's a really important. Element to this discussion, staff has no problem with. Noting that and moving that to when it's gonna get triggered anyway.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff? Okay, can we bring the applicant over now? Okay, um. You can turn on your video. Hi.
Hi there.
Hi, can you state your, begin by stating your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Virginia Morgan and my address is nine 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 five Lloyd Creek Road, Woodland Park, Colorado.
Okay, great, um. So you're, uh, you have the floor, um, like your thoughts on the staff. Report and recommendations and anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, it's pretty much covered by the program or the project documents and we agree with the staff report. So I don't really have much more to add, as far as the. Geo hazard report, if it's gonna be required eventually, I'll just go ahead and start it, I had inquired with Michelle if we had to do it at all. But if we're gonna have to do it to pull the permits, then we'll just get it done.
Okay. Thank you, um. Would, uh, any questions for the applicant? David? Are you, I think you're muted right now, David.
Sorry, I didn't have a question.
Oh, okay, um, anyone else? Okay, um. Okay, um. If you have nothing more to add, then we'll let you go for now. And. Thanks, let's see. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this. Yes, or ask anything, now would be the time. We'll close a public hearing part of this. Are the public comment part of this public hearing and um. We're ready to discuss or make a motion or. The floor is open, Dave, uh, Mike.
Michelle, in your email, you said that you were gonna make a phone call to the to the neighbor that. Wrote the email, did that occur? You're muted, yeah.
Sorry about that, I I didn't talk to her by phone, I did send her. Uh, both the staff report and an email that um, summarized some of the high points. Uh, about, you know, where we are in the different processes and that planning commission was not considering. A subdivision or anything tonight, you're not considering. There's, there's no request for any kind of lodging use or or uh, you know, vacation rental or anything on the property and. If that were to come up in the future, they'd have to go through. You know, the process is in place at that point. She had indicated that she was gonna be at this meeting, I can only assume that. You know, she received the information and got. A better idea of what's, you know, being proposed and and with staff's report and everything. Um, decided it wasn't worth it, but I did not talk directly to her.
Okay, any? Anyone else, anybody wanna make a motion or make a comment?
So I think that um, I would like to, I'm going back between different screens because my. Notes are on the different screen, so I think I'd like to make a motion to uh, set the rezoning request for a public hearing. At the May twelfth, two thousand twenty one regular meeting.
Okay. Is there, we have a second, any more discussion? Okay, then let's vote by raising our hands. Yeah, and we see Jean's hand there, so she's voting too, okay, so that's unanimous. Okay, so this will be at uh. Next. Meeting next month. So, um, moving on. See, uh, item six, I think we. That's the item that's been withdrawn, so there's no discussion there, so we'll move on to other business, uh, update regarding the zoning code rewrite.
Great, thank you, it's so nice to see everyone tonight, I'm going to bring Melissa over so we can. Introduce her to those of you who haven't had the opportunity to. There she is, so we'll just let her turn her camera on and her mic, um. So, um, everyone, this is Melissa, she's with the Logan Simpson team and working with. All of us collectively on the project and has been one of the forward points of contact thus far. Um, what what I really wanted to to do tonight was to have sort of a. A pre-meeting to the joint meeting, um, that we will have with city council. Um, the the last Tuesday of this month, it's a special session dedicated to this topic. Um, we will. Not be taking public comment during that time because it is meant to be a work session. Um, I'll let Melissa here speak in just a second, a little bit about. Um, what they're hoping and anticipating they will bring to the meeting, um, it'll be a, you know. Presentation that will include some of us from staff as well. Um, we have been very busy the last, especially six weeks. For those of you who participated in the first public outreach event in February, that was. Was pretty well attended, um, the feedback we got from that was helpful. And we did hear from some folks in the community that they attended and they they maybe heard something different than they thought it would be or. Um, were pleased, you know, just just a variety of responses, I think it was very good for um, sort of an initial. Temperature of the community and what they know about the project and and start to introduce the project to the community. Um, and then the last few weeks have been really intense in terms of the survey that's hosted on the city's website. Um, for those of, hopefully everyone here has. Visited the webpage that are the link that I forwarded on to you in the memo. And prior to that as well, um, you know, we're trying to put as much information about this project there as possible, so it's a one stop resource. For folks in the community. As well as um, those of you who serve on boards and commissions and staff. All of those who would be considered stakeholders. The survey, we um, decided to extend the input time for that. Through, I think we're looking at the end of this week. Um, there, you know, we do track um, participants and at this point. I think we're over two hundred who have begun to take the survey, so from a numbers standpoint, we are just. Beyond, I think what initial expectations were. So we've had incredibly robust participation, uh, we've also been um, having. One-on-one and small group stakeholder interviews. And for those, uh, from a staff perspective, we have been able, we've participated, we're able. Um, typically taking um, a secondary position to the consultant team, they're leading these conversations and. And overall, they've been pretty interesting, um, we're gathering that feedback. Um, I think what I'd like to do for just a quick minute, Melissa, is to turn it over to you. Let you share with us a little bit about where we are in that, and then what I would like to do is kind of wrap everybody into a discussion, I. I I challenged you all to think about what your um, your hopes and your expectations. Would be for this joint meeting and, you know, I'd really like to to have a few minutes to engage with you guys on that, cuz I think it'll help us. In making sure this joint session is, is everything it has the potential to be.
Great, well, thank you Christine, um, and thank you all for being here tonight and having me here, um. So as Christine mentioned, my name is Melissa Ruth, I am part of the Logan Simpson consultant team, working on the project, um. There's, I've met with a few of you, um, we do have a fairly large team behind us, including um, some attorneys that are helping us. Um, review the code for um, some legal aspects, um. As Christine mentioned, what we have done to date is a lot of public outreach, um, we've also done a very thorough. Internal review of um, the zoning and subdivision titles and the sign code. And that is feeding into our um, code assessment, which is what we are bringing to you um, at the joint work session. So that code assessment is a full review of um, the code and the subject, the the titles. Um, with some information as to kind of what we saw, what we found, um, and then. Um, associated recommendations for the update. It is a kind of living document, so it's not a end all be all. We will bring forward our, all of our recommendations, but ultimately, um, as we move through further public engagement. And the actual rewrite process, some of the recommendations may um, evolve through the process, um. So that's, that's what we're looking to bring um, at the joint work session and have have a discussion um, with you and the city council on.
I think, you know, part of what we will need to do as with that. Report and that feedback they bring to us is going to be prioritized. Right, so we, um, the initial grant application for this project was, um, the project was over four hundred thousand dollars. What we ultimately end up, ended up with was approximately two hundred and twelve thousand dollars and some change. And so we, we were very efficient in terms of how we approached the project. Um, Melissa's team was very thoughtful in putting together their their proposal and their work plan. So that we could maximize and and get the absolute most out of this process that we we possibly can. Um, you know, having said that, we we probably will need to prioritize, there will be topics that. That are more difficult to tackle in a six, nine or twelve month period than than for our community. That we may not have anticipated or that we do anticipate and we know we're just not gonna be able to tackle it this year. But those are some very important um, decisions that we'll be making, you know, and and I'm looking to this group. In coordination with city council for for work, for making that priority. You know, really how we approach it, what's best for the community, and then we're executing that obviously. So, um, you know, with that, I wanted to just kind of, you know, quick show of hands, who was able to participate in the survey? Um, did you go online? Okay, great, and if you were able to come participate in one of the interviews? Okay, we're setting up, um, tomorrow morning, we have a one-on-one with um, with John Graham, with mayor. And then we, it looks like we're, I'm going to be trying to set up um, one more, hopefully for Friday morning. At ten or ten, I think ten thirty. And wanted to um, ensure that for those of you who haven't participated in one of the stakeholder interviews and you'd like to, we would love to have you. Um, participate in that and following tonight's meeting, you know, I'll send out um, an email with with all that information. And so if you could join, that'd be great, um, because. Something that we have certainly found as we're going through this process is that when we get folks who have um, some, some. Subjects of interest in common, the conversation can be very robust and um. It's it's fantastic, so if any of you would like to participate in that, um, I do have, I believe. One, um, Anne Nichols will probably be the one from U R A on Friday morning, so you'd be joining in with her. So, so with that, I'd love to kind of turn it over to you guys and hear a little bit about. Um, from you, um, in response to the memo that I sent you and and any thoughts you have so far. Um, where we are and where we need to go.
Yeah, might have your hand up, go for it.
Um, thank you, I just had one comment and then a couple of questions. Um, Melissa and I had about an hour together, and one thing that really shocked me was. Um, how much we had to talk about the going into that meeting, I was kind of thinking, oh, well, you know, what am I gonna say? Whatever, and then just as we started talking, I realized how, having served on this planning commission. I think that I had developed a fair amount of expertise, sort of surprising to me, and that I had. That there were things that I thought we had left hanging over the years that I thought we needed to address, and this might be the time. And so one thing I would say is I would encourage, I, it'd be really great if we could get. Very large participation in the meetings, the interviews between the um, people on the commission. We don't all share the same ideas, you know, like David raised a good philosophical question um, tonight. And in some ways, he and I have some similar, we might view that somewhat similarly, but we also view it somewhat differently. And we wanna have everybody's voice there, and so I think that it'd be really great if you guys, if everybody could participate. So that's one thing, in the meeting about the, with the um. The uh. City council and then the, and then um, Melissa's uh, team. Um, I guess that I wanted to just, and maybe it was in the, in your memo with Christine, and I didn't read it carefully or I've forgotten it, but. I had just a question about what we do there, um, first of all, I'm hoping. Um, that the, that the, um, that the experts coming in to help um, guide us through the discussions. That when they're, when they present, Melissa, when you guys present, if you guys could be pretty clear about. What the changes are and how they correspond, the suggested changes and how they correspond to what the situation is now. And also maybe even like if there's something that goes against what's in our plan Manitou or something like that, I. It'd be really nice to say, you know, this is the code, this is what we put in our code Manitou, and now we're proposing to go in a different direction, so I'd kind of. If we could have some organized way of thinking point by point, that would be really helpful to me anyway. And um, the second thing is that. Or maybe this might be more for you, Christine, when the team presents their recommendations. Are we gonna be at this meeting debating them with all of us in the city council at that point? Or really is it more informational that we listen to what they are, take it in and there'll be other opportunities to be debating them? Cuz I could imagine if there are two commissions together, a city council and us. And then there are the, uh, there's a big presentation that then we could be here for a day talking about, you know, like everyone debating. Cuz we don't all agree about everything, so I just kind of, like you were saying, you were saying that you wanted to challenge us. About what we wanted to see come out of it, I guess that before I felt that I was in a position to answer that, I needed to know. What was the expect, you know, like the base expectation of what the meeting was for, um, and what's reasonable to accomplish at it.
I think that's a great question, yeah, this is, as you, as you just noted, this is the first joint meeting on this, um. I am not aware how in, in the recent or distant past, a a joint meeting was held like this before with planning commission and city council. And and this current group, um. This is the first of what I anticipate will be. A number of meetings, um, over the next year. Where we'll come together and have conversations and share perspectives and, um, you know, of course, be gathering information. All the way along, um, you know, I think that there will be. You know, Melissa, I'm gonna ask you a little bit, cuz I know you guys have done this quite a bit, so I'm gonna let you jump in here, but. You know, I think that there is going to be a a necessary melding, if you will, because the styles, as you know. Of the two groups are are a hundred and eighty degrees different, as are your charges, right? Your charge is the the literal interpretation of the code and. And city council then has the ability to to go through and and interpret from a political perspective and a policymaking perspective, so. So I think there's, there may be some some bumpiness there, um, but I will do everything I can to ensure we're not there for twenty-four hours. Straight, cuz that would be really long, but Melissa, do you wanna comment on on it just a bit, what your expectations are from the Logan Simpson side?
Yeah, so as Christine mentioned, we've, we've done, um. We like doing the joint meetings because it is a good opportunity. Um, for the planning commission with the expertise that they have to. Um, provide that insight to the city council, um, I don't think we anticipate um, a debate or any sort of. Argument about our recommendations, but cuz we are taking into account. all of the feedback to date from the questionnaire, the open house, and from all of the stakeholder interviews. And then we bring all of our professional expertise into that. So, like I said, we've done a full review of the code. And all of the recommendations are our professional opinion. As far as kind of debating back and forth, we don't, that's not, it's not usually that common. It, it can happen, but usually with our recommendations, it is, like I said, kind of a working, a working document. As you'll see, when you do see the actual assessment, there are multiple sections where we've said that there needs to be more review or more public input. So affordable housing, attainable housing is a topic we've heard a lot about from just about every stakeholder interview. We haven't, we don't have direct recommendations on what sort of route we want to go as far as attainable housing. We want to, we want to get more feedback, bring back some, some options from other communities. So you'll see that in a couple of different sections as well, but there, there is more discussion needed on some topics. But then we also have very specific recommendations for things that are fairly clear, like definitions always need to be updated. You'll see that, that, that there's a very strong recommendation to update all definitions within the, within the code.
And we'll see this before this joint meeting, we'll see this report.
Correct, you will.
They'll be sending the materials to me the end of, well, actually middle of it. I think we're looking at early to middle of the week prior to council, and then the packet gets published Friday. And my expectation is that I will distribute that out to you before the packet is even posted. So as soon as I can flip that back over to you, I will do that.
Great. I think that'll be a good starting point for the, the meeting.
But just to follow up, this is helpful because I, then, then to my mind, this first meeting seems more informational, that we're getting information. Because I'm, I was sitting there thinking, after I read your, your memo, Christine, I thought, wow, like, just think about the, the VRBO issue alone. That would, that could be like a three-day marathon discussion, and that's just one out of a lot of different things. And what I was kind of worried about is that we would be going to this meeting where it would be overwhelming, that you've kind of, we're getting into all of the kind like the idea of a workshop, like for us, when we think about a workshop, is that we're getting more in the weeds and we're talking about like, like this was the recommendation, what does it make sense, you know, like blah, blah, blah. But that doesn't sound, and I'm kind of glad about this, it doesn't sound that that's what we're going to be doing. So when you said, you know, what are our expectations to be successful, I guess that I would say just reading the report ahead of time, hearing them talk us through it, and then figuring out, as you guys were saying, maybe you already signaled this, so thank you for doing that, maybe what our priorities are in moving forward, but not actually trying to debate the different issues, but just say, like, what are the things that are most important for us to, to move forward with, like, as you, you know, prioritize them? And then we're going to have to have some of these discussions once we establish what the priorities are. So I think maybe just getting information and establishing priorities that probably already will be a successful meeting, and maybe it would not be successful for us to do too much more than that. That might lead us in a bad direction, I kind of think.
Yeah, that, that's, that's exactly correct. And, and you will see the report beforehand, and then we will, we'll have a presentation that will walk through each of the, the sections. We group our recommendations into, to sessions, so that they're easy to understand and kind of see what the, the proposed changes are. And then we'll be looking to both you and the, the city council to help us to prioritize which, which update sections you want to see. We draft the code in modules, so that we can bring portions of it back to the community and back to you guys to review, so you're not looking at a full new code all at once. So that's where we'll look for the guidance, not only from staff, but from planning commission and city council as to, to what you want to see first or what, what sections are realistic for us to achieve in the shorter amount of times. And then looking at some of the sections that are maybe a little more difficult or challenging later on in the process, that will require some more public input.
Yeah, one thing I think would, will be useful in this joint meeting is, you know, we, we come from a completely different experience than city council. They get inundated with emails, you know, hundreds of emails every week. And I'm sure, what I would like to hear is each of their perspectives on what's most important. You know, what they think isn't working, what they think they want to have changed. And then I would think our, our contribution would be to articulate what we see not working, or, you know, what we see as the biggest concerns. And it doesn't, you know, if, if everybody limited themselves to three minutes, including all our most gregarious counselors. You know, that's 42 minutes, and that's a good start for a discussion, just to get everybody to understand what everybody else is thinking.
That's great.
Melissa, will your firm, will you be conducting this meeting, or will the mayor, or?
So we'll have our presentation and we'll, we'll guide the discussion, but it is a joint, joint work session, so it will be technically run by, by the city and the, the mayor. But it's, we're, we've seen them done in multiple different ways. It's really up to the the community to, the way that you guys have done it before, so.
Well, don't, don't underestimate Manitou's ability to be cantankerous, difficult, and even obnoxious at times. But it's simply the mark of an engaged community, I think.
Yeah, and we've, we've seen some really good engagement and some, I've had multiple really great conversations. You know, as Commissioner Reagan said, he came to the meeting not really knowing if there was a whole lot he could provide, and I think that was a feeling of a lot of community members coming to a zoning or a code meeting. It's, it's a hard topic for people to get engaged in unless they have a specific interest. But we have seen a lot of really good feedback from just about every meeting that we've had. So I'm really excited to, to actually get to the writing piece of it. Our team, we love, we thrive in the code world, so we're, we're kind of nerdy that way.
Now, we all, we all know it, we sleep with it, we, we dream about it. We, we've had so much experience.
Well, it's a very encouraging report.
What about others? Mike or Julia, have you had the chance to take the survey? Do you have any, any thoughts on what your your hopes and expectations are?
Julia?
I, well, I do, I'm, I'm actually emailing everyone right now, because I'd like to be involved in a stakeholder interview. Because I'll be giving my own public outreach meeting that night, so I won't be able to participate, and that's unfortunate. So I'll, I'm sending that. My expectation is that we have a fun report based solely on Alan's former comment.
I think we can cook up something with little bubbles and clouds and that sort of thing to illustrate your meaning about.
I, I have not signed up for an interview, and I apologize for that. I'm just extremely busy this time of year. But I, I, I will do that in the next day or two.
You know, if you don't have the actual time to sit down, you can always email your comments or specific concerns to Christine, and she can get them to us. We've seen that before, too. If, if the times are just too difficult, we try to work with different schedules, but if it's, if it's too difficult to, to work through a time, or, you know, you are busy, I do understand. However, you want to provide feedback, whatever is easiest for you, works for us. We're happy to take it.
What, what's the, the logistics? Is it a Zoom meeting or, or face-to-face, or what do you prefer?
Yeah, it'll, well, you know, it's actually going to be a hybrid meeting. So council is moving towards a hybrid format. And, but this will be, because we're so limited on how many people we can actually have in Memorial Hall. I think it'll be about 60% of the commissioners, or excuse me, counselors. And if any of you wanted to be in person, I'll, I'll ask you to let me know that in the next week, so that we could plan for it. Otherwise, I was planning that the bulk of, like, all, all of the consultant team, most of you, and then staff and counselors will primarily be online. We're just trying to provide some physical presence, because that's what city council is trying to do. So they've, I don't know if you've watched any of the city council meetings the last couple of weeks, where they've been trying to launch this hybrid format, working through it. We're feeling pretty good that by the time we get to this joint session, we'll be in a place where we have the technology well in hand, so that it'll, it'll be smooth.
That's interesting, but I was actually referring to the interview.
Oh, yeah, it's a Zoom.
It's a Zoom, okay. That helps.
I too have just been slammed lately. I just, I wish I could contribute right now, but I just so backed up, I can't tell you. I, I had company that came back with me from Chicago yesterday, and I sent them away today, go see other people, because I can't get to them.
We can understand that. And this is going to be a long, you know, pretty long process. So there'll be plenty of time for input and that sort of thing. You know, we, I'm, I'm having the same type of conversations with folks on city council who, who are willing to engage in advance to either, to complete the survey, to engage in, in an interview. We had one group that was really great. It was Nancy and Steve Bremner. And we had a couple of folks in the community, and that was, I thought, a pretty robust conversation. And so, so we're, we're trying to, to get as much out of the way in terms of some of the introductory commentary that we, because we all have expectations on how we go into it. So I want to collect all those. That way we deliver a presentation and help manage the presentation in a way that is as smooth as possible.
And additionally, it'll, it'll help to see our list of recommendations, because we're also, we'll bring that to you. Again, it's a working document. If there are things that, that we maybe missed, or things that you are really passionate about, that you think really do need to change. Maybe they, they look like they work in writing, but they don't work on the ground. Those are the things that you can continue to bring back to us at, at any point through the process. We, we don't ever stop taking feedback. So even as we're writing the sections, we're happy to, to take feedback or any comments or concerns that you have. So if you do, when you do see the assessment, if there are things that you think are missing, and you haven't had a chance to provide feedback, we will take that feedback then and incorporate it into kind of a, a second draft of the the assessment, not a formal draft, but we'll, we'll incorporate that into our, our working draft.
Okay, any other thoughts, comments? Okay, well, great. Well, I'm really excited about it. I'm really looking forward to the meeting. The raw data on the surveys and the interviews are coming in is pretty, pretty interesting. And probably much more, we knew it would be diverse, but it's probably even more diverse than we thought it would be, if that's possible. And so it'll, it'll be, you know, it'll be a fun path forward to, to really put all this together for, you know, code wonks like all of us who, who enjoy this, right? So looking, looking forward to that. But I guess with that, you know, I just want to thank all of you, and you watch for a couple of communications from me over the next couple of weeks. And after we have the joint session, then I will also, I'll circle back with this group. And if you guys on the next regular agenda for this group want to have, you know, kind of break it down, have some sort of dialogue about it, happy to do that. And of course, you know, phone and email is always an option too, as well as coffee. I'm, I'm good for coffee anytime. So with that, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thanks, Melissa.
Yeah, thank you all so much for your time and, and for having me. We do, we really appreciate all the feedback that we, we have received. And thank you for those of you that have participated in the meetings, and those who, who do want to participate. Feel free to reach out. We're happy to speak with you.
Yeah, I think it'll get exciting when the public gets a draft of proposed changes that affect them personally, whether it's short-term rentals, or ADUs, or parking changes, or whatever. It's, that's when the fun will begin.
For sure. I, I've noticed in some of the interviews, this is a side mark, side comment, some of the interviews, we've had some folks come in who are very passionate about one or two particular issues. And the, the team, Melissa's team, has been really great about drawing them into other topics that, that do feed into the code and, and engage them in a really interesting way. So yeah, every, everyone comes at this differently, and we, we have so many different levels of expertise and understanding and perspective, that it, it is going to be fun.
Okay. Well, I look forward to that, and I guess we can move on. The last item of, on our agenda is a notice of council actions and updates.
So the rezoning for Six El Paso, after discussion with the applicant, we want to process that with city council. Once the recommendation for the major development and variance are through planning commission, have that all go as a package to council. So the applicant wants to do that, and so we're waiting to go through the, the process with those other applications, and then package it all up for council review once planning commission's done. So don't have a date yet for that, but it'll follow, you're finalizing the major development.
Okay.
Just a generic question? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What's the role of a city council liaison?
That's a good question. I don't know that there's a good answer for that. I don't think that the liaison role actually has like a job description. And so some liaisons, especially for the you know, the advisory boards, they tend to come and participate at meetings. For you and for you guys and for the HPC, the city attorney does not love the role of that having council be advisory or, or liaison to the quasi judicial boards. And so they tend to, liaisons tend to not come to your meetings. Especially if there are items that could move forward to council on those agendas. So we have not been seeing liaisons either at your meetings or the HPC meetings.
And that's primarily the pressure from the city attorney.
I think so.
Primarily, I, I, you know, I do think that there could be a, a path forward on that. Because there, there are other topics that are discussed, and, and I think it could be, could be very meaningful for some, for some engagement. You know, when, when when I came on board last year, it was, it was explained to me, there is no city council liaison for planning commission. But that isn't a commonly held perception and hasn't really been clarified. You know, and I've seen in the first few months, as we're kicking off like this project, for example, around the code update. Boy, it, I think that there could be some great opportunities for engagement and, and should be. So, you know, I'm starting to do a little behind the scenes work to, to figure out how to propose a path forward on that.
Well, thank you, Mike, because you're raising an important issue and one that has been a bone of contention and difficulty for a long time. The, the city attorney has been making that case for a while. I've said on record, and I'll say it again, I think it's incorrect judgment. I'm not a lawyer, but I read and, for a living, and I think that's an incorrect judgment, and it doesn't surprise me, Christine, that other communities do things differently. And they certainly have attorneys as well. For a long time, because of his judgment, we did not have the liaison come, but to our meetings. But Bob Todd and then Corinne Toll, I can't remember the order, but when they served as our liaison, they said, we're going to come regardless, even if we're being told not to come. And I felt we're going to come regardless, even if we're being told not to come. And I felt, found that to be very, very helpful. That they did that and they came often. So we actually, even in Manitou and even in this case of a liaison from the city council coming to our own planning commission, we do have a, we do have precedent that that happened and it happened over a course of several years. And so we, you know, I can see now, especially with a lot of changes that the city attorney might be trying to push again and make it seem like that's just the, the standard and we never do that. But that has not always been the standard and we don't all agree with it. And so I'm happy to go on record about that. I'm not ashamed of having that, you know, we're allowed to have our opinions. But I would encourage us to have the, I would again encourage us to go back to the practice of the, the city councillors, Todd and, and Toll and have the people come that are assigned and that's what a liaison is supposed to do. That's the title of it. And we have them whether, but it's ridiculous that we have a position and then they're told not to come. I mean, that makes no sense. So anyway, so I just, just to bolster, you know, you, you as a planner, I think that that would be a great thing to do it. I don't know what Mike was intending, you know, by the question, but I think it's a good one to get out there.
I totally agree with Tip. I think that to me, it's like, I think I know the definition of liaison and I don't know where our journey is coming from. All I can say is they live in a town that's very different than ours. That's all I can tell you. It's like, I think Manitou's different. I think we need a liaison. But you know, maybe they don't need them in Boulder. Maybe there's a problem with quasi judicial in Boulder. But I just, I, according to definition from what I've read too, I'm not an attorney. But from everything I read, that the liaison is supposed to be the link between. And it's like, we have no link. Doesn't make sense to me.
Right. And because we're, you know, we're, I, I struggle with this, how to, because other counselors will report out on other boards and commissions. And at council meetings, as all of you have seen, and, and I'm like, what about HPC? And you know, what about planning commission? Like just, you know, there, there are things happening there too. And so Julia, do you, I hate, I called on you twice. I'm so sorry. But you know, just you're, you're in this, this professional world. What, what are, what's your input on that, on this?
I certainly don't want to speak to what Jeff has made. I don't know anything about that. I do know that I, we have used, and I've worked other places where I, I understand where there would be a conundrum or a conflict. But maybe, maybe establishing the, the, not the rules, but an understanding of what the role is and the scope for that role. And maybe reestablishing that would be useful because it does serve a purpose, a really important purpose. And having Bob Todd come in was useful. I don't, that, that came out wrong. I, it was, it was a, it was a service to us and probably to the city council.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and I think from my understanding is, you know, one of the, one of the concerns is, you know, kind of ex parte or, or, you know, knowing information going into a council hearing that other city council may not. But the way that you cure that is that you talk about it. But city council gets all of the staff report. You know, they get the notice of action, which is basically the minutes from the item. So they're going to, they're going to get the same basic information as this, the council liaison that attended the meeting will have heard. They're going to get it in writing. So maybe, you know, I, yeah, we just, we need to talk some more with.
How about, how about a suggestion? I, I, you know, as chair, I'd be happy to send a communication to city council. Saying that that's our opinion, that we'd like to have that liaison participate. And you know, it's like when Alan Jensen was our city attorney, it was never a question. The minute Jeff showed up, we stopped having a liaison. And then we briefly had one with Corinne and then with Bob. And I think there, there had been some pushback to try to keep counselors from going to quasi judicial meetings with this new council. And, but we can push back and I'll, I'll be happy to do that. Just bring up the discussion. And then we can talk about it on the 27th too.
Can I just drop some little Easter eggs in there?
Yeah.
While wearing our pajamas, dream.
So Alan, are you going to do that? I mean, I would like you to do that.
Yeah, I will do that as long as everybody's comfortable. I will do that tomorrow.
Great.
At home all day, just writing inflammatory emails.
You're such an inflammatory guy.
You're going to make us earn our weekend, aren't you? Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
Well, anything else? Any other issues, Mike?
No, I, I had no agenda on that question and I evidently hit a nerve. So there you go.
Yeah. Okay.
You've done a great job of asking very simple questions that, that I, and we all have lots of thoughts about. So that's great.
Okay. Yeah, adjourn this meeting then.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.